Welcome to the Village Trustees Candidates Forum. There are four candidates to fill three positions at this time. To begin, we're going to have each candidate do a two-minute opening statement, starting with Steve Nero.
Good evening. My name is Steve Nero, candidate for Westmont Village Trustee. I'm a lifelong resident of DuPage County, a Westmont homeowner and a Westmont Chamber of Commerce member. I hold a bachelor's degree in Business Administration and Political Science from Elmer's College. On top of my bachelor's degree, I earned my master's in Public Administration with a specialization in Local Government Management from the Illinois Institute of Technology. Earning my MPA degree has given me the opportunity to analyze public policies and learn the inner workings of local governments. I've always been interested in local government, and to really get involved, you need to have a stake in the community. I bought a home and opened a business in Westmont and immediately got involved. I'm a proud resident of Westmont and believe that my energy and enthusiasm will be a strong asset to the village board. I've made an investment in the community and possess a strong desire to serve. Without a doubt, the largest problem facing the village board and any municipal board right now is finance. After being appointed chairman to the Westmont Citizens Finance Planning Committee, I had the opportunity to look into the village finances and suggest to the board a variety of solutions, including revenue generators, eliminating waste, and formulating long-term opportunities. We need to hunker down and find savings everywhere we can in our budget that doesn't compromise public safety or the efficient operation of the village. Fresh eyes, taking a fresh look at every line item, and thoughtful input and debate will be required to get through a difficult financial period. We need to partner up with neighboring communities and other governing bodies in order to achieve economies of scale. Businesses and families are doing more with less, and so should our governments. Our residents aren't accustomed to a certain level of services, their taxes aren't going down, and their services shouldn't either. By both living and working in Westmont, I have the flexibility and time needed to effectively serve the people of Westmont. I will be a community leader, increasing our community feel and encouraging Westmont's developments. As a firm believer in competition, we must promote Westmont's strengths and develop incentives to entice economic development to our village. As an active committee man, I've been able to meet thousands of people, the willingness to engage people and really find out what they consider important as a strength of mine. The people really respond positively when they recognize my passion for tackling the issues head-on. People who don't serve energetically, people who campaign energetically don't serve energetically. I've got a lot of energy. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin Scheid?
Good evening. I'm Justin Scheid. Two years ago, I sat in the audience, just where you're sitting now, and I listened to four candidates talk about the issues facing our village. My wife Shayna, who you heard from earlier, and I made our home here in Westmont just over two years ago. And we came to the forum to better understand the qualifications of each of the candidates and the issues that were faced in the village. At that time, the discussion focused on the difficult state of the village's finances. Yet I was surprised that there was no candidate with a strong financial or accounting background. Here we are, two years later, and the village's finances are still at the front of everyone's mind. This is one of the most challenging financial periods in this village's history. Many of you are aware of the $2.8 million budget shortfall and the half a million dollar increase in the property tax levy, the allegations of embezzlement against the village's former finance director, and the financial challenges that are facing this village. I'm a certified public accountant and a tax attorney, and I'm running for village trustee because I have the accounting background and experience to help improve Westmont's financial picture. Just over a year ago, I was asked to assist the village on the Citizens Finance Committee, where I got a look at Westmont's financial picture. The mayor established the finance committee because the village board lacked the financial and accounting expertise and turned to the citizens to provide input and new ideas. That's exactly what I did on the finance committee, and that's exactly what I intend to do on this village board. At tonight's forum, I want you to think about how each candidate is qualified to receive your vote on Tuesday, April 5th. I'm the only candidate running for trustee that hasn't asked for your vote in a prior election. I'm running now because Westmont needs someone with a background in accounting and finance, with the education and the expertise to help improve Westmont's financial picture. You're here tonight, just like my wife and I were two years ago, because we all have a significant investment in this village, and not just in our homes, but also in our tax dollars that we invest every day in this village. This village operates on $26 million of our tax dollars. Each of us wants to know that our money is being protected and that we're getting a return on our investment. As an attorney and a CPA, I will make sure that our money is protected.
Thank you. Bob Scott?
Good evening. I'm village trustee Bob Scott, and I'm here tonight seeking your support for reelection. I'd like to express my gratitude to this community for allowing me the rewarding experience of serving on this village board. My family moved to Westmont in 1977. My wife Fran and I have three daughters. Two of them graduated from Holy Trinity and are now getting a fulfilling education at Westmont High School. Westmont's been a wonderful place to live and a great village to raise our family. And for the past 11 years, my activities in our community have included serving as a village trustee, chairman of the Fire and Police Commission, a member of the Community Emergency Response Team, serving on the Oakwood Homeowners Association Board, a member of the Chamber of Commerce, and at the state level as president of the Illinois Fire and Police Commissioners Association. After I was elected, it became apparent that to do this job to your satisfaction, more knowledge on local governing and leadership was imperative. Responsibility and the role of trustee compelled me to seek that knowledge by enrolling at the Office of Public Leadership at the University of Illinois and the Civic Leadership Academy at Northern Illinois University, the only Westmont trustee to ever do so. Why? Let's face it, government doesn't work too well. And then rather than complain, I decided to do something about it. The more I put into being a good trustee, the more you, the residents, will get out of it. If teachers, policemen, firemen, nurses, and mechanics are required to get training, why not trustees? Even Walmart greeters receive more training than elected officials. Of course, that might help explain what happens down in Springfield. Tonight, we're here telling you why you should vote for a trustee. But what's the job? A legal description is that we are the local legislators of the village. We make and pass laws. In my opinion, our main purpose is to solve problems that affect you. We represent your personal and property interests in this community. We're expected to work side by side with each other, the other governing bodies, the businesses and property owners, and protecting those interests, to be fiscally responsible and to seek your input on the direction of our village. By having enough laws and ordinances on the books now to fill the jewel parking lot, the legislative part of the job should be the last thing we have to do. Working with, listening to, and helping solve your problems is exactly what I've done. Tonight, I ask for your continued support.
Thank you, Bob. Suzanne Seneca?
Thank you for supporting me as your village trustee the past four years. Westmont is a great community with a hometown appeal, and I'm proud to serve our residents. Tonight, I ask for your support. We've accomplished much over the past four years. Even in tough economic times, Westmont has grown with regard to new business. One only has to drive around town to see the accomplishments. Auto dealerships have expanded, Expression Dance Studio, Moon Dragon, Novel Experience, Burr Ridge Lighting, and others have opened their doors for business in Westmont. Walgreens will soon open, and construction is started on Westmont Market. Westmont Yard is open and brings people to our southwest Westmont Business District daily. We're holding our own on the economic development front. However, there's still much to do, and community involvement is vital. Also, we must actively search for ways to assist our existing businesses. I'll continue to support our Chamber of Commerce and encourage new and existing businesses to gain and retain membership. Partnering with the auto dealers, Westmont Auto Mile has been formed. These partnerships provide the great family events we enjoy, such as the Fourth of July Fireworks Taste, Holidays, and more. These events take place at no cost to the taxpayers. I'll work on your behalf to ensure they continue. There's nothing more important to our village than our residents and the services they begin, they receive. I'll continue to support our police and fire departments and encourage training on all levels, as well as to continue the great police and fire programs offered to our citizens. I'm your advocate. As always, I'll evaluate all issues and all angles before voting. My vote is your vote. I'll continue to listen and respond. I'll represent you and work on your behalf to ensure Westmont remains a safe and great place to live, work, and raise families. I sincerely appreciate your support and ask that you please cast your vote for me on April 5th. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. We have a lot of questions from our audience members and from emails, so I certainly appreciate that input. We're going to start off with those. Thank you very much. To begin, why do you want to be a village trustee? Starting with Justin, why do you want to be a village trustee?
Well, I didn't just decide to run for Westmont Village Trustee. I carefully researched the job. I met with the other trustees. I met with the village managers. I met with the department heads. And I determined that because of the state of the village's finances right now, we need somebody that has a background in accounting and finance that can help work through the financial statements, work through the budgets, and work through the significant financial challenges that are facing this village. Our village isn't alone in those challenges. All the other local governments, the state government, the federal government have the same challenges. But we need people that have the expertise and the background now to try to help this village come out of the economic downturn that we've experienced.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Thank you. I have a very sound and lengthy business background, a business background that has really assisted me in serving our community. Working on budgets in both the private sector as well as the municipal sector gives me the information and the ability to serve the restaurants, or the residents even better. I have a passion for this community. I have a passion for the residents. I look at this as a job of public service as opposed to politics. We have to serve our community. We do what's best for our residents. I feel that I can bring that to the table. My volunteerism throughout the community allows me to see the positive, as well as to interact with people on issues that may need to be resolved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve?
I have a huge stake in Westmont. As a business owner and resident in this village, I want nothing but the best for this village, and I will do whatever it takes. I will commit to whatever it takes and give every bit of energy, every ounce of energy I have, to make Westmont one of the best villages in this area.
Thank you. Bob?
As my father before me, who was involved in local government as I was a kid, showed me that taking public responsibility was a thing that was to be proud of. And I decided to do that after being involved with the village for seven years on the Fire and Police Commission. I got an inside view of what politics in the village was like. So I decided to do that, and then I decided, of course, to learn more about governing and being an elected official. I think right now, my goal is to teach the same thing to my children, to not be afraid of getting involved in local government. We can see that 13,000 people in this town are registered to vote, yet we've only have four people that are here running for this spot. Thank you.
Thank you. What type of development would you like to see as part of the upcoming TIF district in the southwest Westmont Building District at 63rd and Cass? Again, what type of development would you like to see as part of the upcoming TIF district in the southwest Westmont Building District at 63rd and Cass? Starting with Bob.
Well, I don't think trustees are smart enough to know what kind of development that are going to be down there. I think we have to have experts and bring in people who do market studies that will tell us what is capable, what it's affordable to go down there. They have to look at the population, they have to look at the density, average salary, the amount of cars that go by there. So I would have the experts that will come in and give us a scenario of what would be a good fit down there. We sure don't want to make a choice and then find out later on that it wasn't the right fit. So I would leave it up to the experts at this point.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Thank you. I agree, it's not a trustee's job to say what should go in that area. However, I do feel that there should be public input, business input, residents, people who even visit our community. It's a very, very critical area. It's an area that's lacking in sales tax revenue, revenue that's critical to our village services and to our community. We need to leave this to the experts, have multiple meetings throughout the community. It's critical that we have a vibrant and solid tax base on the south side. We've done a great job on Ogden Avenue. It's time to move south and enhance the character and the business segment down there.
Thank you. Steve?
The southwest business district is very near and dear to me. It's right where I live, and I have a lot of ideas for that area in far as developments and such, but the main idea for that is, all comes from the comprehensive plan. When we develop our comprehensive plan for the village, we will find out not what the four trustees here or potential trustees want, but what the entire community wants, the different social groups, the different community groups, the churches, the small businesses, what they want is what we need. It's not what the four or five of us want or think we need. It's what everybody thinks the village needs. And I think the comprehensive plan will define what we should do. It'll be the roadmap for the village, and it will let us, it'll let us put developments in there that we find that will fit.
Thank you. Justin?
I think the TIF district down on 63rd Street is exciting. It's one of the ideas that I helped lead as part of the Citizens Finance Committee, not on 63rd Street, but in the downtown area. I think a TIF in the downtown would also be an excellent idea in the future. But specifically with respect to that 63rd Street property, I think it's going to be whatever the market will bear, whatever the highest and best use of that property is, is what should ultimately go in there. What is most exciting about that is finally, after five years, we may no longer have a vacant lot that the village spent $2.6 million on initially in 2006 to purchase. And I hope very soon that as we work through this TIF process, we're able to develop the incentives to get businesses in there that will generate sales tax revenue, which is so sorely needed by this village right now on a piece of property that we've been paying on, interest on, for a significant period of time with no return on the taxpayer's investment.
Thank you. Next question. Given the official population has fallen to below 25,000, how do you feel about retaining home rule status? Should it be left to the voters to decide the retention? And why do you feel the way that you do? Starting with Steve.
Sure. Well, retaining home rule is essential for Westmont. It'll enhance the village's ability to preserve integrity of all its zoning ordinances. It'll allow the village to operate in a more cost-effective manner. It'll allow us to have a diversified and flexible revenue base as well. And, you know, I've studied home rule throughout my master's program. I know a lot of the advantages and disadvantages. And as your next trustee, I will ensure that the village board uses home rule in the best interest of the village and not one particular issue. If used correctly and carefully, home rule can be a very powerful tool.
Thank you. Justin?
This gives me an opportunity to give a shameless plug for my website, which I just recently set up. It's scheidfortrustee.com. I just recently wrote an article on home rule and the implications of the recent census. Home rule itself has been used very effectively in Westmont. The multifamily ordinance is one example of that. At the same time, we also used home rule to increase the sales tax by half a percent. And the more immediate impact of really what we're getting at with the census and the potential issue with home rule is the village finances again. Everything comes back to the finances. With the reduction in the population by 1,500 residents, we've lost essentially $175,000 in state shared sales tax revenue. But I encourage you to check out the article that I wrote, because it's an extensive article about this exact issue.
Thank you. Bob?
Home rule is going to be essential for the future of this community. We rely too much on the state, and we need to start relying more on ourselves as a community. Home rule gives us that instrument to do that. We will be losing probably $175,000 by lost revenue from home rule. We have had the landlord license ordinance that went into effect, and now our residents are living in safer and better apartments than they were before. They came to us telling us that the places weren't safe, so we needed it. So my answer is that we must continue staying with home rule. It's imperative to our future.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Thank you. Home rule has always been a hot topic. It's one that must be carefully and thoughtfully administered. It's one that we must educate our community, our residents, and our business owners on. It has multiple benefit and is essential to the future of our community. Yes, it does give us the ability to raise taxes. I can tell you as a current trustee and speak pretty much for our entire board, when we raised the sales tax, we tirelessly looked for things that we could do that would not just impact our village, our residents. We live here, too. We don't want our taxes to increase either. So by increasing the sales tax, we're benefiting from people who are coming into our community. Same holds true for the sales tax, or for the gas tax. It's essential to our future. It must be carefully administered. In the wrong hands, it can be dangerous.
Thank you. This has been touched on by some of you. You might want to expound upon it. Briefly describe your experiences and background with economic development, starting with Suzanne.
Thank you. Well, as a current village trustee, I've had the ability to sit through numerous meetings with developers and potential developers. I chair our village's Economic Development Committee. I've been a trustee, as you know, for several years, and I feel that I know what the vision of our village should be. We must never undermine the character of our village, and we must carefully plan all economic development. I have that ability. Additionally, I chair our Building and Zoning Committee and I co-chair our Finance Committee. This all comes into economic development. We have to plan carefully, tread carefully, and fit the character of our village, and I can do that, and I will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob?
I have 30 years of retail experience in business. I've had numerous businesses. I've lived through a TIF district in Downers Grove when our store was in the downtown area. So I've seen the good that can happen of it. I can also see how it was badly handled in the beginning. So I think I have a unique perspective on how a TIF can be handled and on economic development.
Thank you, Bob. Justin?
I'm a full-time public servant with the U.S. Department of the Treasury, and in my capacity, every day, I see the insides of businesses like nobody else gets a chance to see. I see the insides of small mom-and-pop-type shops, and I see the insides of the largest multinational corporations in the world. And in that respect, I take my experiences and the things that I learn in my daily work, and I will use those for the economic development of this community. There's nobody else on this board that has that experience, that full-time work experience that I have.
Thank you. Steve?
Sure. Well, as the only candidate that actually runs a business in Westmont, I deal with economic development in Westmont on a daily basis. I started my business from the ground up. I've dealt with strategically placing my business product, service, and price to be far superior than our competitors, going up against big names such as Culligan, Ice Mountain, and Hinckley and Springs. It's not that easy, but with a competitive edge, you can be successful. What I plan to do is bring my business mindset to the village board and help Westmont showcase its competitive edge. We have the infrastructure. We have the central location. We have the quality services. Our taxes are lower than surrounding communities. We need to market to new families, encourage, Westmont has a plan, and offer a great, it offers a great deal to potential developers, businesses, and home buyers. With an effective marketing plan, we can beat out the competition.
Thank you. What do you feel is your one biggest asset as a trustee in the village of Westmont? Your greatest asset? Starting with, oops, I've lost my spot. Justin?
Well, I think I have a multitude of good assets, but my greatest asset is my wife. She's been so supportive in this election and helping me get signs out and everything. But as a village trustee, I think my greatest asset is my academic background and my experience. I'm a certified public accountant, and I'm a tax attorney for the federal government. I understand how businesses operate. I understand the financial statements. I understand the budgets. I've gone through all of them in preparing for a village trustee. I have the energy and the time right now to dedicate to this village, and I really want to see us improve our financial picture. It means a lot to me as a homeowner that intends to be here for many years, and it means a lot to all of you also as property taxpayers and taxpayers.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Thank you. I have been on the board several years. I've had the ability to chair several committees. I feel I have a very well-rounded understanding of our village and the workings of the village. We have a long way to go. I'd like to be a part of going there. We carefully, carefully plan development and our futures. I can definitely bring lots to the table, full understanding of how our government works and the role of a trustee. I realize that the role of a trustee is to set policy and procedures, not to micromanage, staff, or try to run the workings of the village. I am a valuable candidate, a valuable trustee, and I hope that people will place their trust in me once again.
Thank you. Steve?
Sure. Well, on top of my academic background, I feel that my number-one valued asset would be my flexibility. I live here, I work here. At a moment's notice, I am here for the village of Westmont. I don't travel for extended periods of time for my work. I am here for Westmont. I am committed to this. Regardless when people say this is a part-time position, it's full-time. You need to be here 100% of the time, all the time. At a moment's notice, you may be needed for the village, and that's something that I can bring to the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob?
Today, being a trustee is not for amateurs. Running a $24 million company, which is basically what we're doing, you need to have to get that education and that training to do it. As I said before, there is no training for this job. We're everyday people doing, we're everyday people doing a job that is not everyday-type business. And so I think by showing that I decided to go out and spend over two years in trying to get public leadership, that's my greatest asset for being on the village board.
Thank you. Next question. To effectively serve as a village trustee, you must be readily available and in attendance at every meeting. Do you foresee any outside influences that could negatively affect your ability to be at the meetings and available for Westmont at a moment's notice? First, Bob?
I spend more time in the downtown area, in the town, than probably on a daily basis than anybody else. My business is in the next town over, but I'm pretty much semi-retired. I'm down to one day a week I'm working. I can come and go as I please. I eat breakfast or have coffee here every morning. My cellphone is on, available to anybody. I'm the one who makes it available. I publish it, so the residents can get ahold of me at a minute's notice. I will be there, have been there for four years, whenever I've been needed.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Thank you. I have all the time in the world to contribute to this village. I don't work long hours. I don't travel out of town. I'm the one that appears at the meeting 45 minutes before it starts to review the materials and to prepare for the meeting. I'm available for committee meetings, business meetings with business owners, trustee meetings. I have the time to give. I'm in this for the volunteer aspect, not for the paycheck in my pocket. This is a job of service, and I'm here for the service. Thank you.
Steve?
No, I don't foresee any outside influences that would affect. I'm very flexible. Again, to reiterate, I will be ready at a moment's notice for Westmont, whatever it may need. You know, running for Westmont Village Trustee is a big commitment, and shown in my attendance record on the Westmont Citizens Financial Planning Committee, I will be at every meeting, actively participating in discussion and debate. I will be there. I will be ready. My cellphone is published, my email, my email is published, and it's, my phone's with me all the time, so I welcome that. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin?
Well, first of all, I think that the sitting trustees should be congratulated on the amount of time and effort that they put into this. I've realized that because I've been going to nearly every board meeting since November, since about the time I was considering whether I wanted to run. Since then, I've attended the board meetings, I've attended committee meetings, I met with the department heads. I even won a police ride-along to get a better understanding of the police department. I've gone to planning and zoning meetings. I attended a violation hearing here in this very spot. I am a full-time practicing attorney, yes, and I do have cases that do at times take me out of town. But I think what that also takes is it provides me with a different perspective. And what is most important to me is the public service aspect. I'm a full-time public servant, the only full-time public servant that's sitting before you right now, and that's why I want to be your next trustee, because of the public service.
Thank you. We see and hear about the board's work and cooperation with District 201 School Board. There are other school districts within Westmont. How do you plan to work with or interact with the other school districts within Westmont? And we're starting with Steve.
Right. Well, good schools, good parks, it's all a great part of a good village. And, you know, being a proud person of the academic system, being a village, being a part of all school districts is important, whether it be trustees going to events or whether it be trustees recognizing students for their accomplishments, it's important. That brings the community together, it strengthens the community, it improves the overall community strength and feeling of the village. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin?
I think the question really goes to the level of transparency in any government entity. I think people are generally a little bit concerned about what goes on behind the closed doors. And as a village trustee, I intend to increase the level of transparency in this village. I think the village has done a good job of increasing transparency, making sure that important public information is posted and easily accessible. But if I am elected trustee, I intend to write a column and make additional information available to the public. Because as I've been going door-to-door and meeting with residents, it's one of the things that most concerns them, is what is going on. And a lot of them aren't aware of exactly what's going on. And so I think having a central location, increasing our website, and providing more transparency is important. It's something that we've worked very hard on in my full-time job with the federal government. It's something I intend to bring to Westmont as village trustee.
Thank you. Bob?
Before the school board elections two years ago, there was no communications between any of the school boards. And it wasn't until I brought it up to our village board to start communications with 201. And that wasn't an easy process, but it was done. And we can see where we are today, where they're having their meetings televised right here in this room. Last month, I asked for the same thing to happen with 86 and Districts 99, to start dialogue so we can have communications with them, which is something we haven't had. And it has just started with the mayor having a meeting with them. And hopefully, we will continue with this, and we will have the same good rapport with 86, 99, and the grade school districts as we do with 201.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Thank you. Well, for the past couple of years, we have fostered a wonderful relationship with District 201. I was a strong advocate to have a joint meeting, and that was very successful. I'd like to see us do that as well with the other districts, and I will not stop until we do. I support our districts, all of them. You see me at the sporting events. You see me at the pancake breakfast, the spaghetti dinner. I don't care what district it is. I attend those, I attend all of the events, and I think it's the responsibility of all elected officials to do exactly that. I do that year-round. I do that every day, every chance I get, not just during election time. It's critical, and we have to develop relationships with all of our school districts as well as other taxing bodies.
Thank you. What are your plans to help fill empty storefronts? What are your plans to help fill empty storefronts? Starting with Suzanne?
Thank you. That's a tough one. In any economy, I think it's hard to make a living on suburban Main Street. You can't really compete very well with the Walmarts of the world, the Meyers of the world. It's almost as though having a business in a downtown has to be a habit, has to be kind of a little hobby, just something to do to fill your day. It's very difficult to make a living, raise a family, on a storefront on a Main Street. We have to look for ways to incentivize people to come to town to open stores, be it a rent-sharing agreement that might go for a couple of months. We have, you know, the facade grant. We need to search for other ways. We can do that. We have to go out and recruit businesses.
Thank you. Bob?
The only retailer on the board is the candidates. I can tell you, we can't bring businesses downtown until the downtown business landlords decide to do something about the buildings. Retail is 10-foot ceilings, not 8-foot ceilings. Those are for homes and small offices. It's very difficult to even start a business when you're looking at that type of a ceiling height. Also, the condition of the buildings in downtown could use some work. And until those things happen, and honestly, the only way it's going to happen is to put a TIF district down here in the downtown business district. That will attract your developers. That'll attract your people who want to tear down the buildings, some of them, and rebuild and put new businesses. Until that happens, I'm sorry, nothing's going to be happening down here that we, as trustees, can do until that TIF is done.
Thank you. Justin?
Again, as part of the Citizens' Finance Committee, we looked at TIF in the downtown area. I think it's an excellent idea. Generally, TIF, that's where they, you know, they usually foresee TIF going, is in the downtown area. I think what we need to do is take a hard look at the Economic Development Department of this village and see how business-friendly it really is. I think that's the first step. I'm personally against rent subsidies. I feel like the market should bear what the appropriate rent is. But I am in favor of relocation grants, and I've written a small article about the relocation grant program, where we would use money from the facade grant program and try to incentivize businesses that are operating in other areas to come into Westmont and generate sales tax revenue for us. And in that regard, the village would provide some offset of the costs.
Thank you. Steve?
Well, I think first and foremost is we need to be competitive. You know, there's a multitude of things you can do. And with an MPA background, I mean, sales tax incentives, rent subsidies, you know, regardless of other people's opinions, is they get people in here. Downers Grove does it. We need to do it, too. I have a personal experience here. My cousin started a restaurant, Downers Grove. When he was picking a location, I said, "Why not Westmont?" And he goes, "Because they don't do anything for me to come there." We need to be competitive. We need to bring them in here, whether it's promoting the facade grant, whether it's fee waivers, whatever it may be, helping them advertise on public, the website, or the train station. That's what we need to do. We need to use the Westmont Chamber of Commerce, network with the local businesses, promote each other's businesses throughout the village, eat, sleep, and die in Westmont. And that's really the key.
Thank you. Next question. In light of recent U.S. Supreme Court rulings regarding individual rights to firearms for self-defense, and considering the lack of statewide concealed carry, what are your opinions regarding modification of open carrying ordinances within the village? Starting with Justin.
Well, I think the bigger concern with any sort of concealed carry law that may come ultimately from Springfield is the security of our public buildings. Being an employee of the federal government, we keep very strict security over our buildings, no firearms allowed within the buildings. And I think we'd have to seriously consider how we're going to deal with that in Westmont, with the public buildings that we do have. Again, it's going to come down to cost. Everything ultimately comes back to the finances. And so where's the money going to come from for the necessary infrastructure, the metal detectors and such that we're going to need? So these are things that we need to be thinking of. I think that we need to stay ahead of, you know, the legislation that is being considered down in Springfield. And as an attorney, I do keep in touch with that.
Thank you. Suzanne?
I think that's a hot topic, and I very much agree that if something like that were passed, we'd have to take a hard look at all of our municipal buildings, as well as our schools, any event that we have in this community. And that does cost money. I think that is far, far from something that this board, in the very near future, would have to judge or vote on. But it is very, very important that we protect our residents. Concealed guns, you know, for some might be fine. For others, it might be very, very dangerous and unsafe. Everyone's under a lot of stress. There's a lot of unemployment. There's trouble within our world and short tempers. And it's not something I'd necessarily be in favor of.
Thank you. Steve?
Sure. I think it's a great point. Again, I don't feel that it's something that the Westmont Village Board would be effective use of their time to look at. I think the state legislature would be more, better off focusing on that. I feel that if it were to happen, and Westmont would have to take a look at security measures, mainly in the schools, the village buildings, because it is something of somewhat importance. The system that is in effect now with purchasing a gun, requires background checks, requires a FOID ID card, I think that's pretty effective. Adding additional rules and laws is just going to make things more ineffective and more costly to the taxpayers.
Thank you. Bob?
It's unfortunate this world's gotten to the point where this is what's going to happen, where the only, there's only two states left in the country that haven't got it. So this isn't about if it's going to happen, it's going to be when it happens. And the talk down in Springfield is that they're seriously considering it. So with that, we're going to be faced with it. There's not going to be any choice with it. And again, like everybody else has said, it's public buildings. It's this room right here. It's your schools. It's your churches. That's going to have to be a different mindset on how things are. And we have to start learning from how other states have done it in other communities. So we don't try to reinvent the wheel, and we try to learn from them and do what is practical.
Thank you. Next question. It seems Westmont acquires a lot of vehicles, especially police cars. What is your position on Westmont vehicle acquisition? We're starting with Bob.
For quite a while there, we had an issue with vehicles where they seemed to be breaking down all the time, and the cost of maintaining them because of the older squad cars and the other public vehicles was costing us more than getting newer vehicles. Right now, it seems like we have a lot of new cars, but those cars are reused by other departments. So you may see a new car coming in every couple of years. That car gets used, it gets transferred over to the fire department, it gets transferred over to public works, or it gets transferred to another one. Those cars are continued to be used, and we maintain them. So with this program, it saves us money by doing it this way, then continually let the cars just go ragged, and then we're spending a ton of money on repair costs.
Thank you. Suzanne?
I think Bob Scott said it perfectly well. It is critical that we continue with a vehicle replacement program here in Westmont. We have gone through periods of time where the cars, even village trucks, street department trucks, were breaking down and becoming very costly to repair. We had old, outdated equipment. Since implementing our vehicle replacement program, we are able to, every couple of years, replace vehicles. And as Bob stated, we do pass those down. We pass them down. They're used, and used, and used, with hundreds of thousands of miles. A car that, you know, might not be fit to do a police surveillance is certainly fine for doing code enforcement or checking something out. It's critical that we maintain that program.
Thank you. Steve?
Well, I think it's a great program. We need a vehicle replacement program. I've had multiple conversations with the police chief and the fire chief. They're the professionals. They know when the equipment's not up to par for what they need to use it for. We need new equipment sometimes. You got to have it. There's nothing more important than police vehicles, fire trucks, and ambulances that'll work all the time, every time. And that's the bottom line.
Thank you. Justin?
We all know that the economic times are tough. There's a lot of people in this village that are driving around in cars with more than 50,000 miles on them. I understand the cost of the maintenance versus purchasing a new vehicle, and I understand fiscal responsibility. But we need to test the assumptions in this vehicle replacement program. What happened there is they took a $1.8 million loan, for which we're going to be paying nearly $200,000 in interest on that loan. And in 2008, we spent $219,000 of that. In 2009, we spent $594,000. And we're looking at spending $838,000 in 2010. That's the budgeted amount. Meanwhile, we have a $2.8 million budget shortfall.
Thank you. Next question. How do we get out of the 63rd Street Lowe's property without taxpayers losing money? Steve?
Sure. Well, again, I'm going to reiterate, competition. We need to market the property. We need people to actively be out there, be the face of the community, develop a plan for it, speak to developers, work with them, offer some incentive. You know, we're in a bad position now. We got to do what we can to get out of it the best way we possibly can.
Thank you. Justin?
A lot of people have said that I'm negative. I think the board recently did something very prudent in reducing the interest rate on the bond that we were carrying on that. We had a $2.6 million bond when we purchased it in 2006. That was a 7% interest rate. They recently refinanced that in July to 2.25%. I think that was an excellent move. However, we're still paying $255,000 per year in interest costs on that bond for a vacant piece of property that sat there since 2006. I really think the village has already lost money on that property. Now, through TIF, we can maybe get an exit strategy where we can try to generate some sales tax revenue in the near term.
Thank you. Bob?
At the time, when the economy was much better, having the village be able to control that piece of property so we could decide what was going to go in there. Let's look at what's down there now. You have UPS, which brings in no tax revenue. We've got AT&amp;T, which brings in no tax revenue. And we have a nine-acre swamp down there. On the corner of 63rd and Cass, we have a shopping center that does mediocre business at best and has for many years. And behind that, it's even worse. We needed to control that property so future development could happen. And if we didn't get somebody in there like a box store, or whatever it ends up being, that's how you get your development. It starts with one, and it continues to spread. More will come. Until you do that, we won't get any other businesses to really come down there. We're fortunate on the other side of the street that Westmart Yard came in. But right now, I mean, hindsight, would it have been better for the village not to buy it?
Thank you. Suzanne?
At the time, it was the perfect purchase at the right time. Sadly, the economy went south, and our hopes of that property greatly diminished. We've taken the first step, though, to resolving that and bringing value back to the property that we have owned for quite a while. The TIF will allow us to offer incentives to new businesses. It will allow us to put in wonderful stores, sales tax revenue, generating businesses that will help that end of town. It will eventually redeem itself, just as the economy will come back. It's like the person that's underwater in their home. These are tough times, and it will be good. I stand behind that purchase. At the time, it was the right thing to do for this community.
Thank you. Next question. Will you cut personnel before you raise taxes? Starting with Suzanne.
Thank you. Raising taxes is not something we ever want to do. And I don't think it's as simple as saying, "Will you cut personnel," or "Will you raise taxes?" I think what you have to do is look at the workings of the village department by department. You have to look for ways to do things better, faster, with less people, if necessary. Right now, we're on a hiring freeze. We basically a trip down. If someone retires, we don't fill that position. I am never in favor of taking away someone's job. Unfortunately, sometimes that's a business decision that has to be made. I think taxes going up is not what we need in this community. We're all on tight budgets. We all live here, and we want to see things go down, not up.
Thank you.
We have to work smarter.
I don't think there's anybody in this room that wants to raise taxes. I think we're going to have to see what happens with the budget coming up. To be truthful about it, we don't know what we're going to have to do. We're trying to look at everything possible so that doesn't happen. Is it possible that we're going to lay people off? Yes. Is it possible that we might have to raise taxes? That's a possibility also. I'm not going to say or lie to you that it's not. It's also going to be, depending on what the public wants for services, what level of public services are they going to want? And that may help us make that decision.
Thank you. Justin?
Government is service-based. We don't produce widgets. What we have are people that work hard for the residents every single day. 53% of the village's total operating costs are personnel and benefits. I don't really understand the logic of someone saying, "Well, we can try to do more with less." It doesn't exist. I think we need to take a hard look at personnel and see if there are redundancies. If there are, I'm not going to take off the table that there could be layoffs. We really need to try to get our financial house in order. And what's going to have to happen in the next four years is some really hard, tough financial decisions that are going to have to be made. And unfortunately, that may also include personnel.
Thank you. Steve?
Well, I feel that taxes, raising taxes, increasing taxes, adding taxes are all Band-Aid fixes. Regardless of other opinions, doing more with less does exist. It exists in the business world. It exists in everybody's private life. It exists in government. It does. You have to be creative. You have to think outside the box. You have to bring other people's ideas to the table, try new things, work with other governing bodies, partner up, share resources. It can happen. Will layoffs be a possibility? You don't know. When we look at the budget, we go through the budget cycle, we will find out. I am going to be against raising taxes. I feel that we can do things better. We can do things more effectively, more efficiently, and more equitably. Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you. One final question, then we'll get to closing remarks. What are we doing differently to prevent embezzlement by any future person in control of our money? What are we doing differently to prevent embezzlement by any future person in control of our money? Starting with Justin?
Well, I'm a certified public accountant. I understand internal control like nobody else. I took a look at the single audit report after the embezzlement, and I was really appalled at the level of internal control that existed. That allowed the possibility for what exactly occurred. I can promise you, if I'm elected as Westmont village trustee, I will make sure that our internal control is straight, that we don't have any issues with the embezzlement. Can I guarantee that it won't exist? I can't guarantee that. There's always the possibility. And I understand why the auditors did not have the opportunity to catch that. But at the same time, the other thing I'd like to do is make sure that the village hires new auditors. The public trust has been broken, and we need to repair that.
Thank you. If I could have silence from the audience, please. It's a bit distracting. Thank you. Suzanne?
Thank you. Embezzlement, certainly. Very strong word. I'm here to tell you that the village did not lose one penny in that unfortunate occurrence. We'll get every penny back through our insurance. It's not our job as a trustee to micromanage each and every department. Yes, it is the job of our auditors to make sure that there's controls in place. And it's the job of the department heads to make sure that the controls are being held and followed. It happens every day, from Bernie Madoff to the kid that runs into the little store and steals a handful of penny candy. There will always be someone that will try to beat the system. We have to continue to hire highly qualified and well-educated people that will take their jobs seriously and have ownership in our community.
Thank you. Steve?
I think it's a great question. It's very true. It's very real. I think we need to look at our personnel. I think we need to work with HR and make sure that we have the professionals, the right professionals in the positions of power. We trust them with our tax dollars, and that's important. We don't want them stealing it. We don't want them trying to steal it. It is very important. You're going to hear transparency a lot. I have an idea of putting the checkbook online, letting everybody where the money goes. And I think having an idea like that will allow people to really see what happens. You know, you really have to focus on who's doing what for the village, what's happening, where the money's going, and what they're doing with it.
Thank you. We are now going to begin closing remarks. Thank you. We are now going to begin closing remarks. You each have two minutes for them.
Can I get the?
I'm sorry, Bob.
Yeah.
[laughter]
I think human nature lends us to trusting people. We trust our kids. We trust our friends. We trust our employment. And sometimes that trust is broken, and that's what happened here. There wasn't much any of the trustees could have done to see this happen. And there's no guarantee it won't happen again. These things just happen. The auditors couldn't catch it. I think we're a little wiser right now. Our eyes are opened up. I feel sorry for the next person that's coming in to do this job, because they're going to be really looked at like under a microscope. But right now, I think we've taken all the precautions we can. I agree with Justin, by having new auditors coming in. And maybe having somebody like Justin on the board won't hurt either with that extra set of eyes and his expertise.
Thank you, Bob. My apologies.
That's okay.
I have a head cold. There's fatigue happening here.
I'll let it happen again.
All right. We've got our closing remarks. There'll be two minutes each, starting with Suzanne.
Thank you to our moderator and all those who made this forum possible. Serving the people of Westmont is my top priority, and representing you as a village trustee is a job I take serious. I'm confident I'll continue to make a positive contribution. I'll stand firm as an independent voice on our village board, asking the tough questions, searching for the right answers, and achieving compromise. I'll listen to all views and work hard to make decisions that benefit our village and all residents. I'll accept nothing less than fiscally sound programs and policies. I'll insist our tax dollars are spent wisely. I'll work to forge strong partnerships between village government and taxing bodies, searching for ways to cut costs by consolidation such as cross-utilization of buildings and facilities. I'll maintain a positive open-door policy with other boards for maximum communication. We're entering into an exciting and formative time for Westmont. The creation of the Southwestmont Business District TIF will stimulate new business and increase sales tax revenue. A solid and attractive business district will bring people from other communities who will spend money here benefiting our businesses and village by shopping and dining in Westmont. The rewrite of the comprehensive plan is vital to our future. The vision must be formed and adhered to. Housing, business, infrastructure, municipal developments, all must be a part of the plan. We need to take a hard look at our building codes and ensure they are consistent with the intent of the plan. We must be user-friendly for future developers while maintaining character and focus. Both the TIF and the comp plan require input from residences and businesses in order to fit the needs of our community. I'm an experienced leader and have the time necessary to do the job well. I'm not required to travel for business. I don't work long hours. I'm here for you. I'm available for residents, businesses, board meetings, and committee meetings. I will give you 100%. Please place your trust in me and vote for Suzanne K. Seneca on April 5th. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Scott?
Thank you for your questions and allowing me to participate in tonight's forum. The community spirit that can be found in all parts of the village makes being a Westmont trustee very rewarding. I've had the good fortune of meeting many of you, in both good times and bad, and with compliments and complaints. Yet, whatever the reason, we've always found the ability to work together on the issues. Westmont has been fortunate by the recent amount of commercial development that's found its way to our village. There isn't a community for miles in any direction that has the amount of construction going on that we do. Yet, every community is facing its own set of challenges, like keeping existing residents and businesses in town, declining property values, rising healthcare costs, and unfunded mandates. We're headed into uncharted waters of financial uncertainty that none of us have ever experienced. Municipalities have to live within their means, consolidate services where it makes sense, and be prepared for future challenges that will occur. Thinking outside the box will have to be the norm in the years ahead if we expect things to get better. Thinking inside the box is how we got here in the first place. I won't sit here and make promises that can't be kept about changes that have to be made. Only a fool will do that. The only promise that I will make and keep is that whatever issues we face as a community, I will work on them in your best interest and knowing that all of you are counting on me to do the right thing. The best tool any trustee can have is a good set of ears. Four years ago, you asked me to do the following: be responsive to your concerns. I am. Be independent and not a follower. I am. Use my business experience in making decisions. I have. And not to forget who elected me. I haven't, and I never will. So on Election Day, when making your selection, remember, not all politicians are alike. Choose a candidate who has gone above and beyond what's expected in elected officials, and who has 30 years of commerce experience and can relate to our business community. Reelect Bob Scott as your village trustee. And please reconsider candidate Justin Scheid as well. He's an outstanding young man who sees the big picture and who has the financial expertise Westmont so desperately needs right now.
Thank you. Justin Scheid?
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. In my opening remarks, I asked you to consider the qualifications of each of the candidates for your vote on Tuesday, April 5th. Unlike the other candidates, I'm asking for your vote for the first time in this election. I'm asking for your vote because of the financial challenges that are facing this village. And I'm asking for your vote as a CPA and attorney for the federal government because I have the qualifications and the experience to help improve Westmont's financial picture. Since we moved to Westmont two years ago, my wife and I have wanted to get involved. Shane is a Westmont Library trustee. We volunteered at the Taste of Westmont each year. I completed the Citizens Police Academy, where I won three of four shooting awards, and I served on the Finance Committee. But I didn't just decide to run for trustee, as I told you before. I carefully researched this position and the village. I met with the other elected officials, and I'm endorsed by three sitting village trustees in this election. I met with all the department heads and interviewed them on how this village can better serve its citizens. I attended planning and zoning meetings. I attended a violation hearing. I did a police ride-along. I wanted to see how this village does what it does and how it can be improved. It will be a process. I understand that. I know nothing's going to happen overnight, and I know I can't do it alone. But I am going to try very hard to improve Westmont's financial picture every single day. I'm encouraged by this election process, and I firmly believe I can work effectively with the rest of the board to make positive changes in our village. I want to leave you with this thought tonight. As I said before, our village operates on a $26 million budget. It's a major enterprise, providing service to nearly 25,000 residents and businesses. We invest in those services through our tax dollars. But would you invest in a company that didn't have someone on the board with accounting expertise? Probably not, because you'd be concerned about your money. Publicly traded companies where most of us invest have audit committees for just that reason. The only place it could happen is in a family business. And that is my goal for the next term as village trustee, to begin to transition this village from being run like a family business to being run like a publicly traded company, with the oversight and efficiency and return on your investment that demands.
Thank you. Steve Nero?
Well, I would like to thank Ron Sterling and his staff for putting on this event. I would also like to thank our moderator for her participation. When elected, here are the main points I want to focus on during my term. Promote economic development, maintain excellent public safety services, minimize traffic congestion, minimize storm-water drainage issues, increase citizen awareness, and develop a comprehensive plan. I am results-oriented. You will see issues resolved with me as your next village trustee. In about three weeks, the voters of Westmont will be going to the polls to select three trustees to serve on the village board. I'm first on the ballot, striving to be your first choice for Westmont. On April 5th, please vote Steve D. Nero for your next village trustee. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of all of the community members, myself included, I have great respect and admiration for the time and the effort you've put in to serve us and our community. And it really is an exceptional community, in my opinion. I thank the audience for your wonderful, insightful, and poignant questions, and this forum stands adjourned. Thank you.[1793.22][1793.22][applause]